This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for, what's the date today again? August 5th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Agustinovich.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie.
Here.
Thank you, Julie. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to start things off this evening, we'll have a presentation on the Warrenville by Design by our Economic and Community Development Director, Amy Emery. Good evening, Amy.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda includes the final action on the Warrenville by Design ordinance. The vote represents the end of this particular project, but really it's another step in a much longer journey when you look at the Old Town and the Civic Center areas. So I just wanted to take a moment to give us a little context, and then I'll turn it to our consultant, so that I'll dive in a bit to the details of the ordinance itself. Looking back, for almost 40 years, the Old Town and the Civic Center areas were rather unchanged from an economic development standpoint. That doesn't mean there weren't successful businesses there. Most definitely, there were some long, and there continue to be, some long-established and valued businesses in the district. But as a whole, those two areas lagged behind other portions of Warrenville when it came to investment, helping to justify the city's decision to pursue a TIF in the Old Town and the Civic Center areas. Since the TIF was established, we've seen a lot of positive change. If you look at the Civic Center area here around us at the municipal center, you can look at Warrenville Horizon, you can look at Stafford Places, two shining examples of reinvestment in those areas. And in the last couple of years, in particular, the city has really turned some of its attention to the Old Town area, around the intersection of Warrenville and Batavia Roads, and really set the stage for some transformation in that area. The long vacant Citgo building has been removed, along with leaking underground storage tanks and contaminated soils. The roadway, as we've just experienced over the last few weeks, has been improved, and new sidewalk installed and enhanced streetscape is coming soon. Warrenville by Design provides a needed, fresh zoning approach to accommodate a future mix of land uses in harmony and in balance with Warrenville's historic core. The ordinance supports the vibrancy in both the Civic Center area and in the Old Town area. It provides special tools for property owner investment and for new investment in harmony with the community's vision, a vision that we've collected over more than a year now through a number of meetings and activities. That vision is specific to scale and architectural design, landscaping, walkability, and desired uses. Warrenville by Design is different. It's different than other zoning districts. It's a change from the status quo, for sure. It's a change from what's been in place for the last 40 years. And I know that there are some property owners who have asked to be excluded. Staff continues to recommend that we continue with the same boundaries for the Warrenville by Design, and we continue at the same time to work with the property owners that are there to address their issues and challenges. Tonight, Leslie Oberholzer from Codimetrix, the city's consultant on the project, is here to provide a brief presentation to share some highlights about the process that we've engaged in, explain exactly what this overlay is, and the recommendations for the future. I will note for you that Warrenville selected Codimetrix to assist based on their national experience, which has really given Warrenville an ordinance that's not only new and different, but practical with tested provisions that are being used successfully in other communities. And so with that, I'll turn it to Leslie.
Thank you, Amy.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here tonight. I'm just going to go through a few slides fairly quickly. I just want to present the project timeline, just to give you a sense of the depth that we went into in developing this overlay. The project was created with four phases. The first phase was the discovery and directions phase, which you see in this kind of blue-green color at the front. That started last spring, and the discovery and directions included a discovery and directions report that we produced and published on the Warrenville by Design website that we created specific for this project. During that phase, we also created a whole process for the public to provide input. We held a public input meeting that included scoring multiple, like about 100 images, and then we met at tables to discuss those images and what elements of those images we thought was more appropriate for the particular areas. Then, over the summer and into the fall, we created the initial draft and worked with our working group on that draft. And then we had a public review period that you see up here in navy blue, and that actually extended a little bit longer than we anticipated. So the public review period included a community open house, and I'll show you an image of that in just a minute. But this process was meant to be kind of a back and forth, and we did actually tweak the ordinance over that time period. And then we're here tonight in terms of the adoption phase. We worked really long and hard with staff. They were wonderful to work with. They provided a lot of good input throughout the process. We also worked with a work group of which you have at least three members here tonight, including two of your aldermen, and Tim Cosgrove with the Plan Commission. I really like to take it back to the planning documents that started this process and make sure that you understand that what we were doing was starting with the idea and the vision that was included in these planning documents. The Old Town Civic Center SubArea Plan, as well as the Housing Plan and the Economic Development Strategies that had been incorporated into those two plans really helped to kind of infuse this process. We did take those plans to another level through the community process in order to produce the overlay. During the initial session, we had several listening sessions during that initial phase. We had several listening sessions with the community members that we thought would provide some great input, in addition to reviewing all those plans, and produce this little sort of one-page document that outlined what we thought would be the main goals of the overlay. The first being that we wanted to really maintain the sort of small-town village-like character of Warrenville. We wanted to make sure that these would be walkable, well-connected places. We wanted to make sure that these two locations really serve as a gateway to the Old Town area of Warrenville, and we wanted to make sure that they were really high-quality buildings, that the materials would be high-quality. In terms of that housing report, we wanted to make sure that we were incorporating a variety of housing types into this area because Warrenville has a lot of single-family homes, and we wanted to make sure that we were providing for some other options within this area. And then finally, one of the things that we heard over and over was that we wanted to make sure and include natural areas and a lot of landscape. So unique to this particular overlay for walkable areas is quite a bit of setback between the sidewalk and the fronts of the buildings, so that we could provide for plazas and landscape and have a kind of a lush feel. In order to begin to draft the overlay, we identified four building types. These four building types are the sort of structure of the code, and this is the kind of code that I typically create in most communities. We find that using building types makes it easier for people to get a better sense of what you expect to see in the area of the overlay. So the first is a Village Shop Front, which means it has a ground-floor storefront area. This is meant to be sort of the core, the hub of each of the two locations, with that sort of walkable shopping and restaurant sort of vibe. The second is the Village General, which is meant to be either offices or residential buildings. And then the Town General is sort of a version of the Village General, but it is meant specifically for Butterfield Road, which is a larger corridor and allows for a little bit more intensity in the building forms there. And then finally, we created a middle housing type or a series of middle housing types, including the row building and sort of single-family or multi-unit houses that would be, would fit within the neighborhoods very well or adjacent to the neighborhoods and could be used in other locations in the future if needed. The overlay is very specific to these two locations. So we have the intersection of Butterfield Road and Batavia Road, just out here, and then we have the intersection, as Amy pointed out, between Batavia Road and Warrenville Road. These two sort of hubs of activity were identified in the SubArea Plan for the Old Town area. It's important to note that an overlay is meant to sort of sit on top of your existing zoning. So the existing zoning that is in place is being utilized but only for the use information, and we have modified some of that use information to some degree. In general, the overlay is defining what the building form, if you remember the building types that I just showed you, what those building forms will be in the future. So it is meant to apply that building form and then use the use information in the underlying zones to carry forward. So as I said, building types is the structure for the code. This is one set of building type pages for the Village Shop Front. And while you can't read them up there, hopefully you have them in your packet. The idea is that we are identifying which building types can be used on that overlay map, and then someone can go directly to these three pages for the building type that they need to develop and get a list of all of the regulations that are then illustrated adjacent to it. So these, these regulations are key to the illustrations. Additionally, this sort of opening page has some images that were, images that were identified by the community in that initial community workshop as sort of the, the feel that we're going for in the areas. So as, as Amy said, the structure of the code are those building types, and we do have landscape regulations also that provide for streetscape along the street. But the overlay, again, is meant to utilize the uses that are in the existing B2 and B4 zones. However, we have modified those uses to pull some of them out that don't particularly get at the goal for the area of a walkable sort of shopping and social area. So I want to point out, however, that the existing article in your current ordinance for nonconformities, which means any use that exists or any structure that exists, may continue until, basically forever, unless it is torn down or significantly modified. And so existing uses and buildings that do not conform to the new regulations are considered lawful uses and may continue unchanged without time limitation. That orange text is from your current code, and we did not modify that section at all. I also want to note, just in this bottom left-hand corner, that there are many buildings in the area that do not meet the current building standards in your code, so they're nonconforming structures as they stand right now. So finally, I just want to close with the community open house. It was an event that we held in this room and had multiple posters. I think those posters are still available somewhere. That staff has them, and the idea was to have this discussion and understand the code as much as possible. We had one-on-one conversations with people as they came in to make sure that we were addressing any of their concerns. So that's all that I have for tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple of questions. So the nonconforming-
Leslie, would you come back, please, to the podium?
So the nonconforming areas can stay the way they are. Let me just repeat. Until, there was also an occupancy time, and if they're sold, they just need to be the same sort of business-
Correct.
-that's there. Okay. Is that true?
That is correct. There is a, existing uses can continue uninterrupted. As Leslie said, if they're, as long as the building isn't destroyed significantly or they're changing the use, there's not a problem. That's in our code today as a nonconforming use. They can sell the business to another business owner, but if the business ceases to exist for a period of six months or more, they couldn't reestablish. And that's in the current code. That applies to all nonconforming uses across Warrenville, and that language is consistent with what we see in our other comparable communities in this region.
Okay. And just, just on an aside, so some of these buildings are, you might say, they've been there a long time. They're sort of historical. They're known by name. I'm thinking that we would work with, with that as Warrenville, as, you know, they've been there a while, and I would think there's a lot of creative things that can happen to, to not destroy some of this stuff. Do you have any, had you thought about this or considered this going down? I would, you'd probably have to wait for a situation to come up, but-
I would say absolutely. That was really one of the driving factors in some ways behind this Warrenville by Design project. We were working with the community to understand what it is they wanted to see develop in the area, and there was an appreciation for the architecture that exists there, the scale of it, the size of it, the setback of it, even though it doesn't comply with the zoning it has today. It is very intimate in, in terms of how it is laid out. And so the idea behind those regulations is to continue to allow uses that reflect that complementary character as they go forward with future uses. Existing structures that are there, I mean, you see a variety of material types, but you generally see some pitched roofs or some roofline variation. There's historical features. I know we've been working with Mr. Bowig, and he has a, he's rolling his eyes at me. But we've been talking with him, and he has a blacksmith shop that he's acquired recently, and we've talked about, you know, how we can utilize that building in accordance with the regulations. Certainly, we've had conversations with Mr. Bear and his property. So yes, absolutely. Wilkie gets the existing architecture and emulating that has been a factor throughout this process.
Good. That's reassuring to hear that. So again, just, I mean, I think we all, we all know this. We're talking about B2 and B4 in these locations, not across the city, just in these two locations at this point. Is that correct or not correct?
That's correct. This is an overlay zone that would apply to these specific areas of the community, these particular parcels with the building types that Leslie walked through.
Okay. And just so people understand, you mentioned that this, one of the big things about the changes in zoning, one of them, were the setbacks for green space and for walking areas and that whole feel that we want to get. I don't know if you can answer this, but are there any other general concepts, without going through the, the deep, or the details of the zoning necessarily here, that you might say would be, would be symbolic or illustrate the general direction we're trying to go with this overlay? Because I think that's pretty impressive right there, that comment she made. That's, you kind of get it. It's, it's good reason to be making changes.
Yes. So I will say that that whole idea of the small-town character and the images that were presented and discussed during the first community meeting, that sort of pitched roof, not too tall, you know, and the, this sort of idea of having details on the front facade. So the whole idea is that where the buildings actually run along the sidewalk and face the sidewalk with the landscape area between the building facade and the sidewalk. And the idea is that those facades are friendly to the sidewalk, friendly to pedestrians, and the idea is they are very permeable to pedestrians. So windows and doors on the facade, the pitched roofs, that kind of feel is the main sort of goal of the building types and the building forms. And then the landscape is a second part of it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. I guess we're good. Thank you, Leslie. We'll move on to a part of our reading that is always set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seibert. Bob?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. During the late 1990s, the city council did something that no other city council has ever duplicated or come close to. That city council turned a one-and-a-half-million-dollar developer donation for this city hall into $3 million. This was accomplished by the aldermen. No high-priced consultant, no staff time. It was the aldermen that did it. They set a high bar for you folks. They simply, instead of paying for this building other than the general fund, loaned the one-and-a-half-million dollars to the TIF fund, and then they were able to receive the payback of the one-and-a-half million dollars and pay the one-and-a-half million out of TIF dollars for the construction of this building, thus making $3 million out of a one-and-a-half-million-dollar donation. These aldermen knew that the citizens would never have lower property taxes due to TIF 1, never. So their objective was to use the one-and-a-half-million dollars for something special for the citizens, something that would be a wow and something that would be a historical mark forever. Fast forward, the 2006 budget, annual budget, page seven, last paragraph. The, the single largest budgetary effect in fiscal year 2006 budget is the elimination of the TIF repayment to the general fund. The influx of approximately $400,000 annually contributed roughly 7% to 10% of total fund revenue for the fiscal year 2000 through 2005. So in other words, these city councils overspent by 7% to 10% every year, more than the revenue that they received. Instead of using sustainable revenue, reoccurring revenue, they stole this revenue that was an objective by previous city council, and they used it for their candy store, to do what they wanted. Needless to say, the original aldermen that created this extra one-and-a-half-million dollars were furious. These aldermen, previous aldermen, established a plan to gain back some of these dollars, and in two weeks, you will see what that plan was.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to official and staff comments. I have only one this evening. That's to thank all of those involved with Summer Days. It was a rousing success. The weather actually cooperated. It was a couple of beautiful days. The largest car show in our history, I think 165 cars is what I heard. Delightful time, and we came down on Saturday night, and the place was happening. So for once in the area, Warrenville was the place to be on Saturday night. So thanks to everybody who put that together and make it happen. It was very, very nice. That's all I have this evening. Clerk? All right. Treasurer? Okay. Alderman?
Alderman JP Agustinovich.
I just want to remind everyone of National Night Out tomorrow. It's going to be a lot of fun. We usually have a good turnout, and our police, they do a fantastic job setting it up. So hope to see you all there.
And we have quite a string of awards for that particular event. Year after year, we get a national award for the success. So join us. It's a lot of fun. Thank you. Okay. I guess we're good with the aldermen. City Administrator?
Just one quick note. I want to acknowledge staff for their efforts on the software implementation projects. We had several kickoff meetings today to start the next phase, which is the actual ERP. We have already gone live with the EAM portion, which is the Public Works portion. We have a FOIA module that is live and are now working on the next phase, which is the financials and community development over the next several months. They will be engaged with all of those activities and are doing a fantastic job already with the pre-implementation work, which will make that implementation part much, much more seamless for everyone. So I just wanted to take a minute to thank them for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. That's an excellent reminder that so much goes on behind the scenes in the operation of even a small town. It's the old iceberg thing. You see the tip of it, but all of the hard work that staff does rarely gets acknowledged. So I really appreciate that you, you mentioned that tonight, because we do have the best staff we could possibly have. So thank you to all of you. City Attorney? Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the August 5th, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting.
And a second. Any changes to that agenda? Alderman Davalos?
Yes, thank you. Oh, boy. Hang on. Yes, I would like to remove 6A. Accept Plan Commission's recommendation, wave second reading, and pass ordinance O2024-33 approving the zoning ordinance text and zoning district map amendments to establish and apply a new Warrenville by Design mixed-use and middle housing overlay district.
Okay.
The motioner agrees.
Okay. That's removed. We're good. All right. Motioner and second are agreed. Did that change? So we're good. Okay. Then we will go, excuse me, we need approval of the minutes.
We just need a voice vote on that.
Oh, okay.
As amended.
All, all in favor of the amendment to the, to the-
The agenda as amended.
Right. The agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is amended. All right. Very good. Thank you. Alderman Widener again.
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the July 15th, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the July 22nd, 2024 Public Safety and Finance Committee meeting.
Second? Motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any comments, questions, or anything else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening, item 6B, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and appoint- Item 6B, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and appoint Lucy Nelson to the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission for a term expiring April 30, 2025. C, receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners meeting held on January 23, 2024. D, receive and file minutes of the Police Pension Board meeting held on April 23, 2024. E, receive and file report of invoices paid up to July 31, 2024 in the amount of $172,436.56. F, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before August 19, 2024 in the amount of $858,871.08. And G, receive and file report of Chase commercial credit card expenditures for the month of July 2024 in the amount of $12,993.26. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkey?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Krukkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Motion carries. The consent agenda as amended has been approved. We are going back to item 6A. Alderman Davalos, would you like to make that motion?
Oh, was I supposed to... I move to accept Plan Commission recommendation, wave second reading, and pass Ordinance O 2024-33 approving the zoning ordinance text and zoning district map amendments to establish and apply a new Warrenville by Design mixed-use and middle housing overlay district.
Second. Second by Alderman Krukkenberg. Discussion. Alderman Ashauer?
I asked Alderman Davalos to remove this item. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the designed-by-use overlay district. My disagreement is the fact that this rezones for properties specifically asked to have their properties excluded from the overlay district. They're on the very south edge of the district. It effectively downzones their use, and as some of the conversation indicates that we've had so far, it restricts their use going forward, effectively damages their property value if they are looking to use it for a B4 use that's allowed in the town. I don't think that we should ever rezone property that somebody didn't ask to have rezoned, and certainly not in an adverse way. This is just not something I agree with. I think we're overstepping our bounds and shouldn't be doing it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkey?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Nay.
And Alderman Krukkenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, no new business for this evening. We do have, however, the need for a closed session. May I have the motion and the citation, please? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCs, 120/2, paren C, paren S1. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or assigned legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
Second. Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Wilkey?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Krukkenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. We are entering into executive session at this point. We will not be conducting any business at the conclusion of our session. Thank you for your attendance tonight, and we'll see you next time around.
This conference is no longer being recorded.